Being seven o'clock on Tuesday, July 16th, 2024, I will call the meeting of the Select Board to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Board TV. If anyone on the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. Use of—Michael Rauch. Forgot to pause.
Here.
Okay. Use of flash photography during Select Board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line, 1-929-205-6099. The Zoom meeting ID is 869-5775-5505, and the password is all uppercase, B-O-U-R-N-E. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to unmute. All items within the meeting agenda are subject to deliberation and votes. I will note that we have Gina Zarevitz, Peter Meyer, myself, M.J. Mastrangelo, and Anne Marie Saronian in person, and Melissa Ferretti is attending this meeting on Zoom, so all votes will be by roll call. A moment of silence to recognize our troops and public safety personnel. And salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Reading of the Select Board vision and mission. Who would like to read?
Read the vision. Bourne is a proud community that embraces change while respecting the rich heritage of the town and its villages. It is a municipality based on strong fiscal government with a durable economy that recognizes the rights of all citizens, respects the environment, especially the coastal areas of its—the community, and the amenities that it affords. Bourne embraces excellent education and offers to citizens a healthy, active lifestyle.
Thank you. And the mission?
I can take it.
Anne Marie?
Bourne will maximize opportunities for social and economic development while retaining an attractive, sustainable, and secure coastlining environment for the enjoyment of residents and visitors. Through responsible and professional leadership and in partnership with others, Bourne will strive to improve the quality of life for all residents living and working in the larger community.
Thank you. Next is community shout-out and recognition. I have two items today. First of all, I want to give a shout-out and congratulations to the Bourne Youth Baseball Eight Under Team, which won the Sandwich Summer Blast going 6-0 over the weekend. They defeated Hingham 15-13 to win the championship. This is the first Bourne All-Star Championship in years. Bourne Youth Baseball looks forward to working with the town departments to benefit all town residents and the children of Bourne. And further, I had a note from Billy McCouch and Matt Karas that Bourne Youth Baseball would like to thank the town administrator, the Select Board, the Recreation Department and Kit Committee, and with the help of all and the DPW, Bourne Youth Baseball was able to focus on baseball and developing the kids into skilled ballplayers. Normally, we would be splitting time between mowing and taking care of the fields. Because of the trial program with DPW, our organization was able to focus on baseball, and the results have already paid off. So, great news for Bourne Youth Baseball.
Thanks.
Next, I have a shout-out to our federal legislators, Senator Warren, Senator Markey, and Congressman Keating, for their hard work to get $1 billion more in federal funding for the Cape Bridges. Total federal funding is $1.7 billion, and together with the $700 million state commitment, the total is $2.4 billion. The Sagamore Bridge shovel in ground in 2027. Anybody else?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to say thank you to Maria LeRue and the rest of the chamber staff, who was working with my suggestion of holding a food drive for the Bourne Food Pantry throughout the—we started it last week, and even before the July 11th concert, there was a group from Wareham that brought over 100 pounds of dry goods, you know, to the—my cause. And so, we brought that over last week to the Bourne Food Pantry on last Thursday night. We had, you know, some residents coming up, you know, and filling the bin a few times. So, we're gonna try this every Thursday night through the concert season, so if anybody does go to concert, please bring a dry, non-perishable good to the, you know, to the concert and then put it in one of—the bins, and we'll make sure that the food pantry gets it. And we're here to help the less fortunate any way we can.
Did you have a shout-out?
No, I was just gonna shut the door.
Oh, okay.
Stay open.
Yes, thank you.
Has to stay open?
No, we—
Has to stay open?
As long as it's open, open.
Okay.
Sometimes, there's—a lot of noise out there. It's hard to hear.
It is. Sorry.
Next item is public comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone signed up for public comment on a non-agenda item? Anybody on Zoom with a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none. Moving on for the joint meeting with the trustees of the Veterans Memorial Community Building to appoint a new military member to fill the current vacancy. Would you like to call your meeting to order? Mr. Gordon?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Nestor Nigillo. Chairman Gordon from the trustees of the Veterans Memorial Community Building. I'll call the meeting—to—the joint meeting with the Select Board to order.
Thank you. And the item on our agenda is to appoint a new military member to fill the current vacancy. We have an application from Carl A. Forziati. Would you like to come up to the podium and just introduce yourself?
Yes, my name's Carl Forziati. I live in Kalamet, where I've lived since 1976. And as I sent on the forms earlier, just a few days ago—actually, I was informed on Wednesday at the veterans' group meeting that there was an opening, and of course, the suspense date was the 26th. I said, "I have to make a decision and get everything done." My heart has been here since I turned three in 1951. However, my residency with my family was in Belmont, Massachusetts. I was the summer kid who always felt that this was home. And after serving active duty in the military for six-plus years as an Air Force pilot, I settled in Kalamet and ended up with four children and kind of a history there. I have had, we'll say, an adaptive career, military, my own business, and working as a financial planner for nearly 28 years, or thereabouts. And I've been retired since February of 2018. So, the main reason I'm here is I've always loved this little town. I don't—I don't care what anybody used to say about it. It's—it's a great place to live. The people are good. My—my four children have all thrived, going through the Bourne School system. I've been always welcomed into the community, although I'm kind of a quiet individual, and some people don't even know who I am. But that's okay with me. When there's a time that I need to speak, I will always speak. So, my point in application—in the application process is that I—although I'm gonna be 76 in two weeks, it's giving back to the town. It's giving to the community. I have always done volunteer work, whether it be with the admission systems—to—the system to the Air Force Academy, or with my church as chairman of finance committee, and rather outspoken, as I said, when need be. It's kind of a running joke over at the veterans' meeting. They'll say, "Carl, does anybody have anything to say besides you?" Because I feel that too many people have too much to give, and yet, they are reluctant to verbalize it. They feel they're gonna be criticized. And—and if it's rightful criticism, that's fine, so that's a point of discussion. But I have no problem with it, as an officer in the Air Force, and being stuck with quite a bit of responsibility in the administrative positions as the—I'll say, the lead or head financial planner in my office in Needham, Massachusetts, always instructing, always teaching, always helping people. And if—if people are too quiet, I will start a dialogue just to get people involved, because discussions are very, very important. And once—even if it's at my own risk, that I become the foil. However, I think it's important, and I want this town to continue to do well. And although it's a small committee, and it's really in my older age, I feel I can contribute quite a bit to it, and that is why I'm here.
Thank you very much. Thank you for volunteering. Any questions from the Select Board? Any questions from the trustees?
Any questions?
Is there—you wanna start with a motion from the trustees?
Sure. Do I have a motion to move on the agenda item, accepting of Carl Forziati as our newest member?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Would you like us to vote on that?
Yes. I don't know if we have to do—we have to do—you have to do a roll call because—because we have one—are one member on Zoom, so.
Okay. We'll do a vote—roll call vote. We have a—we have a motion from Chris Farrell, and a second from Donnell Beals. Dusty Meyer?
Yes.
Chris Farrell? Donnell Beals?
Yes.
And Joe Gordon is a yes.
M.J.'s yes. If I could vote.
Yes.
God, all about you.
You were fired.
I get them both, because I'm a mom and parent of the trustees.
Do you vote twice?
Sure. I vote for the Select Board, then.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Is there a motion from the Select Board to appoint Carl Forziati to the—as the new military member?
Yes.
To the current vacancy? Is that a term to expire May at the election in 2028? Is that the term to expire?
Yes.
Okay.
Melissa moved.
Melissa moved?
Yes.
And is there a second?
A second.
Second by Peter? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
M.J., yes. Peter?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
It's unanimous, 5-0-0. You are appointed. You will get a—a slip in the mail to bring to the town clerk to get sworn in, and then you are—will be an official member of the committee as soon as you complete that swear.
Yep. We just need also to him to supply a copy of his DD 214, so we can confirm that he's a veteran.
Do we get that, or does the clerk get that?
It would be to us or to the clerk.
To the clerk.
To the clerk.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to confirm that he is—
DD 214.
Actually, do have it on file at the—at the office.
Yeah. Well—
Yeah. Bring—when you bring your swear in, bring it to the town clerk, so they'll have a—they'll have a copy of it. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that.
Mr. Gordon, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Yes. Second.
Second. Before we take the vote, I just wanna say to Kathleen Thut in the town administrator's office, thank you very much. She's the one who went over to the veterans' breakfast and made the announcement, and she's been very proactive, helping us fill the vacancy and communicating with us when we did get the applicant. So, thank you, Kathleen. All right. We have a motion, all in favor to—
Roll call.
Roll call. Dusty?
Yes.
Chris, yes.
Yes.
Donnell, yes. Joe Gordon, yes. M.J.?
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Let's just see the backside.
Okay. Next item on the agenda—moving right along here. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. And we have a consent agenda. A, appointment of the wastewater advisory committee members for a one-year term expiring June 30th, 2025. Keith Barber, John Duggan Jr., Kathy Fox Alfano, Melvin Holmes, Neil Angiel, M.J. Mastrangelo, Marlene McCollum, Wayne Sampson, and Barbara Prinseccotti. B, appointment of Stephen Philbrook from an associate member of the Historic Commission to a regular member of the Historic Commission, term ending June 30th, 2027. C, car wash for Bourne Backboard Booster Club, Fire Station 3 Sagamore and Fire Station 4 Pecasset, on August 10th, 2024, as conditioned by departments. Rain date, August 11th. D, national night out at Buzzards Bay Park on August 6th, 2024. E, American Lung Association use of town roads for their annual autumn escape bike trek on September 27th to 2020—27th to 29, 2024, as conditioned by departments. F, Tohonto Association use of town vehicles for a parade on August 3rd, 2024. G, appoint Ken Chatlin to the Ice One Building Committee as a member who is an attorney. H, car wash for Bourne High School Football Booster Club, Fire Station 3 Sagamore, on July 27th, 2024. Rain date, July 28th.
Motion to approve a consent agenda in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
M.J., yes. Next item is discussion—oh, no, next item is eight, licenses and events. A, licenses. Consideration of Class II Dealer License for Classics and Exotics LLC, 147 State Road, Bourne, Massachusetts, restricted to 13 vehicles. Is the applicant here? Would you please come up? Introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name's Michael Sokas.
Hi, Jeff Neimus.
And you're just applying for a license? Is there—do you have anything you wanna tell us about your business, or?
Yeah. So, if you're familiar with 147, it used to be the old southeast trucking Mac store. That was a storage unit for a little while, and then Mark—Mark Liddell owns the property and leases the office that's pretty much in the middle of that parking lot, which makes for a great little showroom and get-together. We have a nice, you know, front line there. The landscaping's beautiful, and yeah, so we have a good opportunity together. We've known each other a long time. He started working for Subaru back in the—back in the days, when I was up here in Bourne on McCotters Boulevard, and we worked together for years and years. And so, we just came together to see if we can do some consigning of some classics and exotics to—to people that want them.
Sounds great. Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none is—
In place.
There—uh, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Class II Dealer's License for Classic and Exotics LLC, located on 147 State Road, Bourne, Mass., restricted to 13 vehicles.
Next up.
That's on-ground, though, right? But on the website, we can have as many as we want, correct? All right. I can't live without 13 cars, guys.
So, that was a motion by Peter, and a second by Anne Marie. And correct me if I'm wrong, but 147 State Road is the start of the Black Door.
Black Bear Ride?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just had it. It was awesome.
Yeah, that's great.
We had about 2,000 bikes in the parking lot. It was a great show, great, great show.
Yeah.
Great cars, obviously. I don't know if you know the Patino family, but good people, and they worked really hard to make that show for everybody, so we had a good show this year, for sure.
That's great.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have a motion, a second. Any questions? Any questions to the audience, Zoom? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
M.J., yes. 5-0-0. It's unanimous.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we just received something in the mail? How's this work from here?
Uh, well, so this is a—this is a Class II license? Can they go pick it up at town hall, or is it mailed to them?
We'll notify—the applicant.
So—I did have one request. I don't know if this is with you guys or—in-house, but um—so, we both, you know, work to separate. He's working for Hagerty, so like, he might be somewhere where he wanna go to an auction and have his own license, or I have my own license, because we own it together, 50/50. So, how would that work? Could we go—could we get our own licenses in our own names, or do we have to have one license with both of our names on it and then make two copies?
Talk to the administrative office.
It's one—it's one license.
Can we get two copies? So that he has one on his person and I have one on my person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you talk to the administra—talk to the town administrator's office.
Marie?
Yeah, Marie. Yeah. That's who you've been working with. That's who you should talk to about it.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay. Next is events. Discussion and possible vote. Lyons District 33-S to hang a banner across Main Street no earlier than September 23rd to profo—2024, to promote their Seaside Walk Fest event on September 28th, 2024. I think we approved this event, and the banner, we didn't discuss when we approved the event, and it's—the banner's going up after the Canal Day banner's coming down, so. Any discussion from the board?
Motion to approve the banner request.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote. Uh, Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
M.J., yes. Next is discussion and possible vote. Laura Brooks' use of Buzzards Bay Park on August 11th, 2024, for a birthday, as conditioned by departments, is—and is anyone here for Laura Brooks' birthday? All right. I gotta find this in the packet, because I have a question.
It's on page 77.
Page 77 of 234. Just so people wanna know. And that's the first packet. Okay. So, this was—it—this is an interesting event. It is—let me get to the right one.
Birthday party for two and five-year-old.
Yeah. So, it's 50 people on Sunday, August 11th, right? For—this is very strange. Sorry. I keep saying I'm on page 76, but I'm not, so I don't know why. So, she's not a Bourne resident. She has 50 people coming at 10:00 in the morning on a Sunday until 3:00. She said the picnic table's next to the gazebo, which I'm assuming that means that—I mean—I mean—it's—the—I assume it's the—the pavilion, and it's a private event. I just want our motion to—to—if we vote to approve this event, to note that it is not an exclusive use of the park and—
Correct.
—that other people will be able to use the pavilion, right? I just wanna—I just wanna make sure that our motion states that, so there's not any—there's not any question. Is there anybody else have any questions about the—the event?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request by Laura Brooks for use of Buzzards Bay Park Pavilion on August 11th, 2024. The four birthday party is conditioned by departments, and furthermore, that this does not mean exclusive use at the pavilion, that it—it will be open for other parties and other people as well.
Right.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Oh, no. Roll call. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
M.J., yes. 5-0-0. Okay. Next item on the agenda, continuation of Chelsea Co. event from our discussion on 7-2. Discussion and possible vote on Pequot Ave road closure for wedding reception on September 7th. And I believe Chief ESIP's on. Is he here for that, or—
Um, I will say that we had confirmed that the applicant would be here to speak with you today.
Yeah. I thought she was gonna come in on Zoom. Amanda McQ is not her, right? No.
No, I actually just joined, and I missed the Lyons District 33.
Oh, you're all—
Oh, you're all set.
You're all set?
Okay.
We're too quick for ya.
Yeah, thanks. Our free timing.
Okay.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Well, this is—I—maybe there was—I—you never know what happened. And we could put it off to another meeting, but I did have a conversation with her after I talked to Chief ESIP, so if Chief ESIP can talk about what he would require in order to have this, and then the board can discuss it, I think that we might be able to dispose of it. Yeah, so. Chief ESIP, do you wanna tell us about what you would recommend for—under—based on this new map?
Yes, based upon the new plan, I would—sorry about it.
Is there another person on now?
That's Jed Johnson.
That's Jed from Site-T.
Oh. Oh.
So, whatever requires the—a detail on each end of the roadway, and that detail would include a police officer and a police car. And we would handle putting up barricades. We would not want the applicant to be placing any barricades or signage in the roadway. This would be—if this board so chose to approve this, then we would provide the officers at the cost of the—related to the applicant.
Okay. And I did explain that to her, and she—she said that was fine, so. If—if the board is willing—I mean, it's a small portion of Pequot Avenue from Circuit Avenue to 26 Pequot. The people that live on the road are all invited to the event, so it's—and it would just be blocking that for through traffic with the police details on the other side.
As long as—it's fine. It can be open right away for—for emergency purposes. I—you know, that's all I really care. I know the details are there, but it's pretty narrow up there, too, so.
I don't think they're using anything in the road. They just don't want cars going through during the thing. They're not gonna be putting—they're not gonna be blocking the road.
The cruisers will be in the road.
What?
The cruisers.
The cruisers will be in the road, yes.
But I mean, the—the event itself is not gonna be putting things in the—in the road that would have to be moved, or—
Only the police department will have anything in the road.
Okay.
I'll also say, too, this would be—the public would still be able to walk along the roadway. We wouldn't be—this would not be closing the road to pedestrian traffic. This is vehicle traffic.
And the alcohol has to stay on private property.
Is that in the—I think that was in the—
It's in the application.
That was in the original. Original one, yeah.
Yes.
All—alcohol cannot be on the public ways.
So, pleasure to the board. Do you have any questions? Are you okay with rotating this with all these conditions, or—
Yeah, I miss you, Cenzo.
You say—
Yeah, I—I think that my question were, you know, first of all, can you reflect on that, I'm bringing, how long is the road gonna be closed for? What is—the what is the time from the Wednesday, Wednesday?
1:30 PM to—1:30 PM to 8:30 PM.
9:30.
Oh, wow, that's a long time.
Eight hours.
Okay, and so we confirmed that all the neighbors in this, on this street are okay with this closure? Is that what I'm to, is that what we're saying here? That the neighbors are all okay with it? I know you said they're invited, but does that mean that they're all gonna be fine with this road being closed?
We, we have nothing and we only have the applicant saying that she has, that the, that the neighbors are coming and they're, they're all fine with it. But that's just what she's told us. So if you want to, if, if the board wants to wait and say that she has to come to the meeting to discuss it with us, we can put it off again. Or we can vote it conditioned on this.
I get nervous about setting a precedent, right?
I think we've done this before. We do block parties, we, there's one that we do in Sagmoor, there's, we've done it on Grasslands Lane, we've done it other times. This is, looks like two four, six, seven.
It's like twelve houses.
Yeah.
Twelve lots.
It's twelve houses, it's a small area. I mean, if you wanna, I, I, I'd prefer to have it closed off, so if they're having a wedding and there's, you know, there's no vehicles going by where someone could get injured, but looking at it on both sides, on the other hand, it's inconvenience for someone. It's September seventh, too, is that? Is that Labor Day weekend or is that a different weekend?
Isn't Labor Day early this year?
Yeah, I think Labor Day's the first. Yeah, yeah, so it's after Labor Day weekend. It's after Labor Day weekend. I think it would be different if it was, you know, August second, you know, like August, Saturday in August.
So her, her father's not setting up the sawhorses?
No. No, no, Chief Esip said the police department the police, the police department will be doing the monitoring based on the detail and putting up the signage.
For discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve the request of Chelsea Co. for a wedding event on Pequot Avenue and for, on September seventh, twenty-twenty-four, subject to all conditions of all town departments.
So we don't have all these conditions written anyplace?
Well, when the lease flip.
So we did, we did, we approved the wedding last me, on Sep, July second, so this would be approving closed, closing off Twenty-Six Pequot Avenue to the intersection of Pequot and Circuit at five forty-five Circuit Avenue, which will require two details, one on each side of the, one in each end. Police cars on each end and signs and
Barricades.
barricades provided by the police department. Pedestrian traffic will still be allowed, it would only be vehicular traffic that was blocked. And all alcohol has to remain on, on private property, not on the public way. I think those are the conditions we've, does that sum everything up, Chief?
I mean, I said all conditions, you know.
You meet all those conditions listed in the motion, yeah.
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion?
So it says here on the detail, plan, my father, who's a retired police sergeant with the Eastern Police Department, is planning to be in Trousers Mountain, setting up the sawhorses to block, I mean, and I'm guessing, I'm trying to
That's why it's in the motion.
In the motion that he won't be
They won't, he won't be doing that, it'll be the police department.
Right, that is not acceptable.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's why I want to make sure.
Yeah, so it's not subject to the, the application, it's subject to the motion based on the recommendations.
Understood.
I don't know. I mean, we haven't heard anything negative from people.
No.
They're aware that she's asking for it, I believe, or, you know, so I don't know.
Miss you, Cianzo.
Melissa?
I start, yeah, no, just again, I want to like piggyback on what Anne-Marie said, I think that it's a great, having this beautiful wedding and I think, you know, we've done a lot of parties at those places. I feel like it's a long time to be closing any roads in our town, but I know we do have the police detail there, it's our people, so I think that's I just worry, as Anne-Marie said, we, you know, setting the precedent, right, we gotta start closing roads all the time for, for different events and getting a lot of requests, you know, how, why, I see that, you know, if we do it for one, we gotta do it for everyone. So I do want to make that note on, on the record as well, that that is a concern, but it is a, we have been hearing complaints from the neighbors as of yet, so I guess we can kind of hearsay that the neighbors are in agreement, but let's hope that is the case if we do approve this for, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I can understand the concern, but at the same time, that's a, that's a burden, having paid detail for that amount of time, so.
It's not gonna be inexpensive.
Right, so I think that, that in itself is gonna prohibit some other people from just jumping in and taking advantage. And it is after Labor Day weekend at least, so.
And I think the
It's a small portion of
I think the record should note that there, any request like this is gonna be considered on its individual merits, that we are not setting any kind of precedent. And, and I think we just said, yeah.
Yeah. Because if one person disagrees with it or has an issue with it that lives in Seven or Fifteen or, you know, we have to respect that.
But at the same time, this has been posted and ever, you know, it's been on the agenda at least twice now, so that
No, I know, but still, these are, most of them are seasonal people.
Yep.
They're not year-round people who are here, you know, and I can see situations where, you know, even in, in a small area, that it's, it's dangerous to shut the roads down. It's not, like, it is an individual basis, but how do you argue that?
Well, so, and we don't have anything in a process for this where we do require a butter notification.
I was just gonna say, yeah, we don't have any.
I mean, we don't have, we don't have a process for it. We could, you know, we could make this motion contingent on, you know, proof of a butter notifications with no objection. But that's complicating it.
Yeah, I would, I would be, I would be worried about that unless you set a very firm deadline where the event is denied if we don't receive that.
Right.
And what type of notification?
Who's gonna be responsible for that?
We don't have anything set up for it, so it's difficult to do.
Yeah.
We can always send out a request and then have them refile if they want to come back in, if they want to come in person and tell us, you know, and we can require it then.
Or we can postpone the decision until, and ask her to come in. Because we
I guess we're taking it, I think we're just taking it down the road. Or how to get voted up or down.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion by Peter, second by Jean to approve the request subject to the conditions cited in the motion. Ready to vote? Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne-Marie?
No.
Melissa?
No.
Yes. Passes three, two, three, three, two, zero. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion, discussion ESMA change order with Train for the school department. Increased contract amount, time for final completion include additional location based water treatment plan at middle school to scope of work. Town administration, I think we're gonna table this, am I correct?
Yeah, I do recommend that the board table this, we received some information at the end of the day today from DOER, the Department of, of Energy Resources. And they do have a role to play in our ESMA contract with Train. And I'm, I had a quick, brief conversation with town council, but at this point, I'm not sure how to advise you.
Okay. So.
Jordan's here.
Yeah, but he's
On another issue?
No, he's here on this issue, but it's, that's, it doesn't matter.
Oh, I know, I know, in case, in case he wants to add anything to the discussion, that's all I'm saying.
So, do I need a motion to table or can we just
No.
consensus, or by consensus, we're gonna table that discussion?
She has prerogative, and we can make a motion to continue it if you want it in the minutes that way. Motion to continue the ESMA discussion to the first available meeting.
Second. You want to do it that way?
I guess, the only thing I said first available, because I don't know when you're gonna put it on the agenda again.
Well, tabling it is the same, it's the same purpose, doesn't it?
Yeah, I, I would table it because I don't know what the discussion's gonna be.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we have no knowledge for discussion. And just based on what was
Okay, so
My motion.
Motion, withdraw? Make a motion to table then.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Jean to table item nine. Melissa?
Yes, table item nine.
Anne-Marie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Item nine is tabled. Discussion and possible vote to accept a donation of a memorial bench for Nolan Kearney, Frank.
Francis Kearney, four, four, six, Barlow's Landing Road. So MJ, per our last meeting, I met with Matt Zawicki, great guy, super cooperative. And he turned me on to Matt Quinn, and we went down and we marked out the spot. And so everyone's been super cooperative. And, you know, we're hoping that we get this thing passed, it would be wonderful, mean a lot to our family.
Thank you. So in our packet, we have a memo from Matt Zawicki. The Department of Public Works has reviewed the request to the select board for the possible placement of a memorial bench in honor of Nolan Kearney at Barlow's Landing Beach. The proposed location and bench design will not impose any issues to the department relative to routine maintenance in the area. If accepted by the select board, the DPW will install the bench working in conjunction with the donor. In the past, we've done memorial benches, the people have given the money, the DPW has purchased the bench, but because this was made personally by the students that knew Nolan, I, I think it's appropriate to use this one. So our policy, our policy states that we don't do memorial for five years. But I know that in twenty-twenty-one, we did a memorial bench for Colin.
Yeah, Colin Crowley.
Colin Crowley. And we also did a memorial bench for
We did a stone, a stone recognition out back for, out here at the basketball court for Jason Carmelany.
Was that less than five years?
Yes.
Yes.
And we did, we also did a bench at Five Corners for Cabela's.
Yes.
So we, we routinely done the memorial benches in less than five years. And I think a building or permanent structure or permanent monument, the five years is probably appropriate, but for a memorial bench, I'm okay with doing it in less than five years, I don't know how the board feels.
I'm fine with, I'm okay with the request. I make a motion that we accept the, the donation of a memorial bench in that as part of accepting this donation of a memorial bench, that the, the family will work with the DPW superintendent on anything that needs to be done to install it.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne-Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne-Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes. Sananamas, five zero zero.
Perfect.
So you can be in touch with Matt Quinn about how they want, how they want to do the installation.
Yeah. Thank you guys so much, I appreciate
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the, you know, the fast turnaround, this means a lot to our family.
That's very touching, very lovely.
Awesome, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, guys, have a great night, thank you.
You too. All right. Discussion Digital Equity Plan Priority Actions. So we have a lot in our packet about the digital equity plan.
MJ, if you want, the implementation portion begins on page one forty-four.
Okay, thanks.
Of the packet, which is page forty-three of the plan.
Is that the, the So there's a lot, I don't know if we want to talk about using the table at the end, or if we want to talk about the, the other pieces of it. We can start at the
You can use the table, if that's easier for the board. The table begins on page one fifty-four.
Does anyone have any comments? Anne-Marie, do you have anything you want to talk about first? You've been kind of doing that, so.
It's a lot of information and it's a lot to process. I mean, there's argument for every piece of action to be a priority, so I know at, you know, the state level right now with the way the B process and the challenge process is going, that the priority is for advocating for better, you know, internet service, right? For the unserved and underserved. And in, in that process, one would hope that it would benefit more than just the underserved and underserved in the community. That's a priority and that's the way the setup for the B grant process is, such that their priority is for that and any monies left over are for digital equity planning. So that first piece of this, the connectivity category in the implementation piece of the plan talks all about just, just that first.
Right.
And then it talks about more in diving into what digital equity is all about with, you know, access to devices and things like that, usage, education, et cetera, which is all really important. So I think, I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is, you know, what the, what are the needs of our community and trying to focus in on that. Because MBI and, and, you know, the other stakeholders, everybody's town is unique in what they need, everybody needs access, that's, that's a no-brainer. But beyond that, you know, some communities may need more education, some communities may need more, you know, access to internet by having, you know, expanders and things like that placed in our community. Some, and the community itself might need more devices for usage, you know, by people who can't afford to have them. So all those other things that involve digital equity and literacy is forborne, obviously very important, because the, this plan speaks to that in, in depth as well. But just giving you an idea of what's on the horizon with respects to the state, their focus is on connectivity right now, and a lot of that money is for that purpose.
Well, and there are like seven different things related to com, connectivity in the plan, in that, if you look in the table.
Right. I mean, there's, there's a lot of great, small targets we can hit with, you know, some, taking it in small bites. The SciTech Committee, where are they? Back there. You know, we talk at length about what's important to the community, so I would probably, I mean, we can't do this in one night, we can't set priorities in one night.
I know that.
I think, you know, we need to explore more, as, you know, especially the, the committee needs to explore more to pinpoint and advise the select board. Because they definitely have been in touch with the, the community and its citizens and trying to put together some kind of, you know, programs and needs. So, yeah. But I think there's a, I think, I think we can hit some really great targets in small chunks as opposed to like trying to go for millions, right? Because, you know, then, then you're all over the place, right? And how much can you get done by just going after these big chunks? But I think we can have more success on a smaller scale in reaching some of these goals.
I have a question about the hundred thousand, it's referenced in It's referenced in this report and I know there's like, you had thought about $70,000 but possibly $100,000. How do we decide what that, or how do you decide? How is that money going to be spent? Do you have a plan for that or is that going to be developed?
No, and it, it, it has to flow. So I didn't decide on the $70,000. That's the maximum that could be reserved.
Okay.
So that's what we were told, it was the maximum that could be reserved. The maximum award is up to $100,000. And that $100,000 has to be used for actions that are identified by the Select Board as, as implementation priority actions from an approved digital equity plan. So then those, once you set your priorities, then those are costed out and a budget is put together on, to show how that $100,000 would be spent. So, but until, until you just, now, now you have an approved plan, you have a final plan. Now you have to identify which areas you want to move forward with and flush them out, put together a scope of work, put together a budget. And then that is what I would take to apply, to actually apply for the grant.
Okay.
None of the money has been awarded yet.
Okay, it's reserved.
It's reserved.
But the SciTech did make some recommendations a while back with respects to, after we had viewed one of the first drafts in, from this digital equity plan. We did pull some things out.
Did you want to speak, Bob?
Yes, if I may.
Yes.
Just one example, again, Bob Dwyer, the nominee for reappointment to the SciTech. One example that's listed in there, and I'm only going from memory, this is something we recommended, is integration of digital equity with the community anchor institutions, CAIs. MBI's original list of CAIs for BORN was highly deficient and through a lot of effort. Brian, what are we up to?
We started with three, we're up to 27 that they approved by right. And then we've added one, two, three, four, five, six. It's an ongoing process.
We're, right now, we're struggling to, to get some of these accepted with, with MBI's rules. We've contacted a lot of these and all of the ones who wrote their own justifications for why they need better internet, all could vastly expand their ability to serve their clients. These are 12-step programs, a lot of programs dealing with youth, a lot of programs that are dealing with essentially low-income segments of the population. This is just coming to fruition, we're putting all of these out. We told MBI what the strategy was. We were trying to identify these along kind of contiguous routes where one run of a one mega, one gigabyte fiber line could serve multiple CAIs who could all do drops off of that. So there's an efficiency there. And the, the implementation portion of DEI, the $100,000, essentially would be a roadmap to how, how to tie all of these together so that you, in addition to the connectivity, which Anne Marie pointed out is the first segment of the process, the other parts of the process include frankly, internet education and maybe hardware for users at the end. So the CAIs again would be community resources for different segments of the population that have expressed interest. And I think that's where the final design of the use of the $100,000 is, is to facilitate that. So when the connections are available and are made, those CAIs can then get connected and can then use the DE program money as described in the plan. That would then increase the service to their clients, if you will. I hope I made that clear, a lot of words. But there is a rationale for tying BEAD money when that comes together with actual implementation of, of the digital equity plan.
You can't speak from the, from there, you have to stay, you can't be heard.
Yeah, you have to.
MBI has made it a point that digital equity and network building are intertwined. They kind of see them as one and the same at some levels. So as far as even getting network money, you have to have a statement of why these community anchor institutions support these vulnerable populations or they'll just deny the requests. So we've gotten, so a few buildings have entered what's called waiting rebuttal. Someone wants to disagree with it. But the PVA building has been added to the community anchor list due to the AA meetings that they serve there are helping addicted populations, so they viewed that as okay. The old firehouse, given that it's a firehouse, was able to be approved. And, you know, attempting to add possibly the sailing school on Wings Neck since it's in close proximity to Bassett's, which is already on their list to serve, since there's no connections out there. So the state's really trying to make it a very intertwined thing.
It's interesting that on the CAI list that's on MBI is there's, sometimes things are under BORN, sometimes they're under Buzzards Bay, sometimes they're under Pecasset, sometimes they're under Catomit.
You hit the nail on the head. It's a lot of fun to prove what service is there when it says Catomit, BORN, Buzzards Bay.
It's kind of interesting and, but it's also interesting that their map, there's two different ways. So when they're listing, like one of their lists, everything is like BORN. But on the other lists, it can be like, it's also in their challenges. So they have like 33,000 challenges already for the, for BORN. And, but they're listed that way, too. They're like listed as BORN, Catomit, Camp Edwards, Buzzards Bay. So it's kind of often because like utilities and motor vehicle use like the O2532, the same zip code for everything. If they're trying to do it, divide it out by the census blocks or whatever, they need to be more specific about that, so.
Yeah, MBI is, it's been an issue with that. And so MBI admits that the maps have issues and that's why they really like the local input. Because sometimes they have no idea, you know, is a Catomit a BORN? You know, why is it calling it Buzzards Bay on the tip of Wings Neck? So they really do appreciate the local knowledge to point out these flaws so that, you know, the money can be distributed where it's needed the most.
So if we don't, the BEAD grant money is, I think, different than the money that's reserved.
Correct.
The digital equity money is digital equity money. So what we're going to do with our digital equity money is going to be different than something we do with the BEAD money. And if, if we haven't identified
Not necessarily.
CAIs in our digital equity plan as a strategy that we want to use for increasing connectivity, is that something that we need to add to our plan? So that, that money would be supporting our digital equity plan? Or is it, is it in, under something different? I mean, there's seven things for connectivity.
You know, because we do have, like it says, advocate for better internet service based on community concerns.
Okay.
And so one of the problems that we all have is not enough information and typically MBI, not enough time to process that information becomes available. So MBI doesn't know what they're, their CAI program's going to look likely at, how much money they have. Right now, they're just basically, we have four more days to get them on the map so that there's even a chance of funding when that program comes about. So that's been a lot of our focus since the CAI bucket is the last bucket before they can divert the money to other digital equities. So if it's not claimed as a CAI, served, runs served, it's, it's gone to, you know, buying laptops in classes and not fixing the internet problem, so.
Yeah, whatever's left over.
And CAIs have a, are harder to rebut than say, the speed testing where a provider might be able to come back with their own network data and prove through a complicated process they're doing good enough. So CAIs might be where the money flows to BORN.
What's 871 Shore Road, does anyone know what that is?
Bourne-Housen Authority, Roland Finney Place.
Yeah, Roland.
Okay, it's not labeled on the.
Oh, we told MBI this, that one's, there's four errors on that. So the triangle is showing it's a CAI, but it doesn't have the CAI flag. So we flagged to make sure in their database it didn't get slipped. There's the surrounding buildings aren't listed as CAIs even though they should be. There's a couple other errors. We flagged them all specifically to MBI, say, this is a problem with four mistakes. We need to be sure this goes in correctly. So that this federally funded public housing facility actually receives the funding it needs for the internet.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a kind of a critical area for getting that, that, that particular thing. And how, how's your success been on getting like Barlow's Landing Beach listed?
So, so we have only so much bandwidth and I would like to add that. One of the issues we're running into is, you know, at the late in the game, MBI's saying all CAIs need a statement of how they support vulnerable populations. This was kind of a late addition that's, other towns have already sent letters concerned to MBI. It's a little late in the game to be making changes, but it is what it is. So the marinas, other towns have had dual-use buildings that have like a volunteer fire station attached. They have gotten those approved. So if we have enough time, maybe the argument is because our police boats are at this marina, this marina is now a public safety. It may or may not fly because we just said, hey, marina's public safety, approve it. They're like, well, we want this statement that we've added at the last second to make it more difficult. And so I'd love to attempt this and I, it's sitting in one of the 500 tabs on my computer, the police boat in the harbor, ready to like send to them to, you know, at least because of CAIs, I think, is where the money's going to flow to BORN.
Yeah, one way to look at CAIs, this is a science, scientist's view, is kind of treat the, the $100,000 implementation fund as kind of a catalyst that opens the valve and is used to complete the program that justifies the, the awarding of funds for connectivity to any of these CAIs. Or perhaps to some of the areas, some of the area challenges that have gotten through that where we know there are vulnerable populations. The Roland Finney, I guess it's a census block. Roland Finney sits in the census block that's an environmental justice area. So that alone is enough of a justification. We've got a population there that doesn't use the internet, doesn't have the hardware and basically is, is kind of cut off. So that's the, an opportunity for both hardware and education, part of which can be funded through BEAD, part of which might be funded through any leftover DE money that they have after they've funded what they think is the, an optimal BEAD program. It's very complex. Their thoughts on it, MBI's thoughts on it are revolving all the time. We're trying to draw that out and perhaps steer them towards a, you know, a high-efficiency rational program. One concern that came up, just if you want to do the arithmetic here, is they announced the, the Gap Network One funding and the vast majority of it went to Verizon and to Comcast. And I don't know what the statistics are, but it was $22 million? I can't remember the funding.
Twenty-two, I believe. Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, to serve, basically the cost was about $4,000 per unserved property to ser- what? What?
It was $30,000.
$30,000 to serve the individual properties, per property. So that, that rationale, I don't know how it got through the system, but they, they clearly didn't take a look at the best way to use those funds. But anyway, we're.
And that, that's, that's making a judgment on that. We don't know how they made the decision, but I do know that the western part of Massachusetts, which was the big focus, I mean, that was the area that was part of their big state funding. So a lot of that money, I think, went to that western Massachusetts, which is sparsely, it's going to cost because that's why they don't have internet, because you can't get it there, so.
True, but just to point out, you know, we want to make sure that there's a, an efficiency and rationality for how they allocate the, the BEAD funds. And we've got a lot of already area challenges that have been accepted for census block groups in BORN. Hopefully we can get a few more. By the way, congratulations and thanks to Brian, who spent an awful lot of town, a lot of time sitting next to residents who have been kind of chronic complainers about the bad internet. And he showed them how to get through the testing program by basically sitting down with them and going through the whole thing, how to find their internet bill online and upload it into the arcane MBI system or Byzantine MBI system, I guess is the best way to try to get it. And so it's a lot of work, but we've managed to get a number of those blocks in, in place. But frankly, I think the, the CAI service is going to be the rationale that will get us eligibility for the most funds.
Okay, so I think, I think it's kind of become apparent that the getting through the BEAD process, the BEAD challenge process is where the focus has to be at this time. And so that, it, once, it's tempting to put sort of like, look further down the line, but if we just stay focused on getting through the BEAD process and sort of focusing the, the committee, like, so we have a, we have a start focus that's really getting through the BEAD process and looking at the digital equity plan priorities so that we're, you know, starting our, our planning and start to do that. So is this our final plan? Is that we have an approved, we have an approved digital equity plan? This is the final approved digital equity plan?
Yes.
And so we can now, once we get the information we need from BEAD and identify some of the other things, figure out some of the specifics of how we want to kind of spend the money and what we want to do. I know Wellfleet's doing something where they are increasing wifi. One of their big projects is increasing wifi to beaches for public safety. I mean, they have sharks, so. So, you know, they want to make, you know, but, but so identifying something like that where you could, where we'd say we want to get all our boat ramps or all our beaches to have, you know, stronger wifi and, or how, and how that's going to get us. What we need in some of the underserved areas might be helpful also.
Right, expanding the hotspots. That was one of the recommendations that the committee had made early on. You know, at the library or down at, you know, the beaches like Barlow's Landing or something.
We helped them actually write that because we anticipated BORN eventually having an issue with needing some type of signal connectivity to the beach. So we thought that was a good use of time to assist them in getting that grant application done for Wellfleet.
Cool, great. Create a model.
We, we actually, so they took the BORN grant and we helped them edit it and helped them get it through MBI and got approved. And they're going to be using, the wifi is strictly for town employees because they have a public safety issue. When they have an emergency, they can't call for help, they have to run up the dunes. So it, in their case, it was, they have enough staff that only the town employees are trained on it. BORN has different needs and so that implementation would look very different. Whereas we have unstaffed beaches, we might need, you know, an approach that's, allows anyone to get into it in an emergency. So as you said, different towns, different needs.
Right, but, but there are other needs, like where there's no internet. So you have people, staff who are going, doing, have their laptops to do their inspections or do whatever if they're not having access to internet that.
We should plug the speed testing then, the Fix Cape Internet, what's the address? Fixcapeinternet.com? We have four more days and so we need three days of speed tests. So if you're listening to this, get on there and run the speed tests. You can, if we get enough people in each census block, the whole census block becomes up for grabs for any provider who wants to apply for the money. So it becomes a feeding frenzy. So everybody who can hear this, get a speed test done. It's the biggest thing anyone can do to change the next 40 years of internet in this town.
And, and look for the response, the confirmation of your registration in your junk mail.
And if you don't get it, screenshot it and email it in, just make sure it gets into them. It's the next three days because they're going to need the 20th to submit it all. So really today, tomorrow, the next day.
Yeah, we're getting to the crunch and it didn't help that Saturday it was down, so. Okay, is there anything else we need to do under this agenda item? What was this agenda item? Yeah, but I mean, it's just talking about the digital equity plan. The next discussion is the membership enroll of SciTech, which is, we have the charge. Like that we've kind of revamped. Does anybody else have any more comments or questions about that? I do have a question about registered eligible challengers. So the town of BORN is listed with Wendy Howland as a registered eligible challenger. What's being done with that? Can you explain? What's being done with that? Can you explain that? You have to come to the podium. The, the TV can't hear you if you're in the audience. Sorry.
Okay. I'm not the only person that's a registered approved challenger for the town of Born.
So, maybe they don't have their full list on the website?
That's entirely possible.
Okay. They don't have a lot of registered eligible challengers, so I'm not sure. I was just curious.
No, I'm not the only one, Brian, this one, I believe Bob's one also. Do we have anybody else? Just the three of us so far?
Jan, are you a challenger, registered challenger? Jay Johnson vice chair of the committee, at least until the end of the year?
No, not. Sorry.
Again, what the, what that registration does basically is, it, it, it's just recognition from, from MBI that they, they know the people, they know, they know the system, they know they know the rules, and they're not going to upload a bunch of junk that's going to waste their time, frankly. And it's hard enough to do it when you follow their very, very complex rules. So, they just wanted to make sure we knew what we were doing. And we were, we've been on every office hour with them, every webinar, et cetera, so that they know that we've been trained in how to upload to their system directly.
And are you all registered under the organization name, Town of Born? Or are you registered individually?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that, that was done when this process opened, June twentieth or whatever.
They were quiet, though.
Just, they said, just, just go, well, what, what happened is that Brian first wanted to test it. So, he, he put the, his name in, Town of Born, and bing, you're accepted. Called up and asked them, and they said, oh, we know you, you know what you're doing. So, you know, if you have other people who know what they're doing, put them in too, so in Wendy and me. So, we, we expected them to come back and say, okay, let's, okay, you need the following justification, provide the following information, et cetera. Basically, you just, he just did it as a test, and back it came, said, you're approved.
Okay.
They had said, we need more justification, we would have come back to this committee, but they didn't ask.
They have interesting information, they have a lot of really interesting information on their website, and I'm sure the information is coming in fast and furious, because it's changing. I mean, they're up, they're keeping their, they're keeping their challenges upda-, I mean, that spreadsheet, I think, is updated every day. And like Born had, has thirty-two-hundred-and-ten challenges, which is pretty high compared to other communities. So, you guys have gotten the word out.
We're on top of the rules enough that they've had to republish some of the documents due to mistakes that we've caught, and they've had to fix statewide. So, they, when they see the Town of Born, they know we know what we're doing as best as anyone else does.
So, do you know, when you do a speed test for, through the fixcapeinternet.com, repeat it? And is that, is that being aggregated in real time, so that ISPs can see the data as it's coming in, do you know?
That one won't be in real time, so it's collected, and then the coalition of people that are handling that, at times will put chunks in and into that. So, it's, that one's not in real time. The real-time one is this portal the state has, but that one is so challenging to use, and it's not really appropriate for the type of problem we have, where we have random drops of the connection in Born. So, we, I don't even want to say the name of where that is, because it's more likely to cause problems. That one is real time. Actually, not even that one, because the way the federal rule is written, individual citizens can't put a challenge in, and so it's got to go through a third party.
Yeah.
And so, the state has elected a third party. So, actually, no, no process is directly in.
Right.
Everything is indirectly in, through somebody that's been trained.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Yeah, so sooner you do the speed tests, the better?
Oh, no, I, I think the early ones were important, because I'm going to say my earlier tests were running just barely over the hundred-twenty, one-oh-eight, twenty-three. And since this week, the, after like, sort of, they, it's been bumped up, I would say.
They're taking the average.
I wouldn't disagree with that suspicion.
It's not a suspicion, it's just, it's a fact.
It's difficult, but it is technically possible to prioritize a speed test if it's detected by the network.
Yeah.
It's hard, hard to do now, but it can be done sometimes.
Yes, okay, then. Yeah, yeah. I'm going to check it on July twenty-second.
Check at different times of the day also. I found, the other day, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to this guy. You want to check at other times of the day also? I found that some of my worst service was at nine-thirty in the morning, in the middle of the week. And during the school year, that's going to be even worse, when people go to school and everybody turns on their, their Chromebooks. That surprised me, though, but then I'm thinking, well, people have, you know, they've got their kids off to daycare, and they're sitting down to their offices at work, and so, you know, they, there's a lot of demand. This morning at nine-thirty, it was okay, but it's important to realize that those two numbers don't both have to be above or below. If you're getting a hundred-and-twenty down and eighteen up, that counts as underserved.
Yeah.
And a lot of people don't realize that, they think they have to have both of their, of their numbers out of what.
Only one, and I, I barely was over, but.
Well, I got, I got something like two-hundred-and-twenty-five down this morning and seventeen up.
Oh.
Go figure.
Okay. All right, so more to be done on digital equity. Moving on to membership enroll of SciTech. So, I sent out late today a sort of a charge that's the, kind of the focus, I think, of where the select board wants the committee to go. And it still lists the cable advisory committees, it lists some of the other responsibilities. But I think the main thing that we're looking at is advising the board on the BEED grant challenge process and grant funding application timeline, specific programming and cost, and advising the select board on priority recommendations in the final draft of the digital equity plan, and identify potential sources, costs, programming to achieve those priorities for consideration by the select board. There's a couple of other things in here, but I think that's really the focus of where, what we are looking for in terms of input from SciTech.
Madam Chair, I have-
The one in here is not the one that was edited.
Oh, it's not? Oh.
The one I'm looking at is not the edited version?
No, no, that's the original.
That's the original.
Yeah, that's the original, in the packet, you're looking at the packet?
Yeah.
MJ emailed the revised one.
Yes, yes, okay.
Madam Chair, I just have to object just to the lateness of that. None of our committee members have seen that. I was at a, I was coming out of a wake at seven o'clock when I saw that. And again, none of the members of the pass board were copied on that at all. So, none of us have had any opportunity to-
We're not necessarily going to vote it tonight. We don't often vote, a lot of times if something's, it's like a policy like this or a charge, we'll have it so we can discuss it, you know? We have gotten the latest from you guys to-
The whole idea is to start the conversation, to move the committee forward, and then, you know, and, and to have the conversation in subsequent committees, right, meetings, and then, once we have-
Just a, just a point of information about the protocol here. You know, you've listed us as up for reappointment here. Is that under the old charter, or is that under, under the new charter here?
Well, we'll reappoint you, and then we can change your charge whenever we want. I mean, you know, that's kind of it. So, we're, you still have a charge, but I expect that we will be focusing down, because I think the, the first charge was kind of broad, and I think there's things that, that we, we, we're looking to focus our attention and your attention. And the, the discussion that we're going to have in the next couple of meetings is based on this charge and based on what we're really trying to get accomplished, so that we can be honed in.
Okay, we would very much like to be a part of that. We would have liked to have been a part of seeing a draft of this going around, but I guess-
It was a draft that went, that had one revision and, and then went to the committee. It's a draft draft.
It's a draft draft for purpose of discussion.
Okay.
Okay, well, you know, I'm going to plead, just lack of transparency is, you know, a concern that I have, at least, and I don't know about the other members of the committee. So, going forward, we'd like to be talking more about this. Well, that's all I have to say right now. I guess you're going to decide whether to reappoint us or not.
Does anybody have any comments on the draft charge for focusing it? I sent it to Bob, and you, you guys don't have it, and we're not going to vote on it tonight. We're just having an initial select board discussion. Do you want to discuss it, or do you want to just table it?
I want more time to read this.
Okay.
Just a clarification question, do discussion items have to be in the packet?
No.
Okay, just curious.
I, I will remind the SciTech committee that we've had several reports from you that were discussed, that were provided to us the day before our meeting. And so, we can't always be completely transparent ahead of time with things that have to be discussed, and that's why we have an open meeting, so that we can have the discussion in the open meeting. And then, we can consider it and come back to another meeting to vote a final draft. So, we all, you know, work hard to get things done and try to be as transparent as we can, and we don't try to make snap decisions or be non-transparent. Thank you.
So, at this point, we get to appointing the members that express interest on staying on the committee, these one-year appointments, or to, until the project, or till the committee is finished?
Yeah, one year, I think one year. What does it say? It's in the-
No, I'm going to read the agenda.
Yeah, it's a one-year appointment.
So, discussion and possible vote to reappoint members requesting appointment. Those members are Robert Dwyer, Joe, John Frank, Wendy Howland, Gerald Johnson, Brian McCada, and Anne Marie Serrunian.
I've already been appointed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I make a motion that we, that we appoint Robert Dwyer, John Frank, Wendy Howland, Gerald Johnson, and Brian McCada to the SciTech Committee, term to expire six-thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
Right. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Okay, roll call, vote. Melissa?
Yeah.
Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five-zero-zero. So, on the item for the, the role of the SciTech and the draft charge that focuses the committee, can we have a motion to move that to a second reading?
So, move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yeah.
MJ, yes, five-zero-zero. So, we'll have a second reading, and we will discuss it again. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Southside Fire Station selection.
So? Someone here for that?
I'll defer to you if you want to start.
Okay, the, we had the committee meeting for the Southside Fire Station site selection. One of the first actions we did in the committee was to look back on the Shore Road property, and it was discovered that the Shore Road property was within the watershed-
Water resource.
Water Resource District. And so, we rescinded the, we rescinded, voted to rescind the Shore Road property from the list of options.
Was that picture in our packet?
There is a picture in the packet of the Shore Road property. I looked, I didn't see the other ones, yeah. One-eighty-eight, yes, and then-
So, the, the RFP properties are in the supplemental packet?
Yes.
And-
Right, that's what I want, yeah, one-eighty-eight, one-ninety shows the entire, you can see, like a locus view.
Yeah, the map, so for the Shore Road property, the better map to use is on page one-ninety of your packet.
Yes.
And that shows the whole Water Resource Protection District clearly identified in the mustard color.
Can you, yeah, so, I think what you said at the Southside Fire Station Committee is that the blue line is like the DEP line?
That's the Zone Two, yes.
That's Zone, that's Zone Two, or that, that's the, you said something about that being like a DP, DEP line?
It is, that's the regulatory recharge area mapped by DEP for the public water supply well.
And then, all the green, all the other green is the-
Water Resource Protection District, that's a local zoning overlay.
So, that, the, the Southside Fire Station took a vote to withdraw the consideration of the Shore Road property as for a fire station, because of the fact that it's in the water resource.
Correct, yeah. And then, there were four responses. There were two properties that were located on Water, Waterhouse, I don't have that in front of me.
MacArthur, so in your-
MacArthur, right.
Yeah, it's in the supplemental, that's in the supplemental packet.
That's in the supplemental, so that was the old, well, the current RMA fitness site, and then there was a lot behind it.
Faris site.
Yes.
Yes. And those were seen to be, the observation was that those were further north than desired. So, the other two parcels were Clay Pond Road, is it one-sixty-one and one-sixty-nine were the two properties? Again, I'm sorry, I don't have that map in front of me.
One-seventy-nine, one-seventy-one?
It's in the supplemental, page fourteen.
Yeah.
Spencer's Garden.
The Spencer's Garden, right, and then, and then the, a portion of-
The driveway.
The driveway, for access, if necessary.
For one-sixty-nine, yeah.
So, what, what we discussed was recommendation to take a look at the old Spencer Garden site to see if that fits. And then, if necessary, look at the other lot for access. We did two separate motions for that, for recommendation. So, first, take a look at the Spencer Garden site, and to see if it fits, and then, if necessary, look beyond. Taking one step at a time. So, the next action?
They were separate.
Correct.
They were, so, the RFP went out, and these came back as separate proposals? Each of these lots were separate proposals, so that you can, if we only need to do the one-seventy-one Clay Pond Road, which is only nine-point, point-nine-two acres, so it'd be a tight fit. But then, but then, if it's not, then add the other. Was the one-sixty-nine Clay Pond Road a full purchase of that property, or is it an easement purchase? Isn't that where their access is?
They would have to move it, right?
They would have to relocate their-
They would have to get a utility easement and relocate their driveway.
Purchasing the fee, so. Yeah, it's what, fifty, what was the square feet? I have my notes.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, six hundred. So, it would allow for in, but we need room for out.
So, that is the-
No, no, we're not saying, there's absolutely no expectation that that would remain a driveway.
No, I'm saying as a whole, I'm not saying specific to that.
Okay.
No.
So, the lot-
So, as it stands now, the committee is doing what, Jean?
So, what, what we recommended is that the town now take a look and see if we can actually fit on one-seventy-one Clay Pond Road. The building, that was the design that was prepared, correct.
From the Southside Fire.
Right.
The schematic.
The schematic, to see if that, if that is a good fit, and we wanted to do this one, one property at a time because of the separate RFPs submitted, and the cost involved with looking at everything.
And, so are you pursuing anything with the Angelo and MacArthur Boulevard property?
At this point, no, because it was outside the desired location for the first station, yeah.
Yeah, response time, et cetera.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So that was our recommendation.
And it's just outside, across the street's Water Resource District.
It's right on the edge, right on the edge, yeah.
Right on the edge.
But it's outside. It is outside.
It is outside, yeah.
Right, it is outside.
No, it's outside, yeah.
Across the street is, so...
On the other side of Clay Pond.
And I, you know, it's, it's, it's got that access out onto MacArthur Boulevard. So if, if emergency access needs to be heading south from that point, they have easy access on the highway and they can head down. I think, personally, I think that's a better option than driving down Shore Road and going through neighborhoods to get to emergency access. The chief, the acting chief was acceptable to this location, so.
What was the, what was the original area that they wanted to be in? Was it between...
South of, south of Waterhouse, north of Barlow's, between Shore and MacArthur.
So this is, I mean, this is really centrally located within the preferred district.
Yeah, I think the, the one thing that is restricting all this is the water, the watershed, that area, that overlay. It's really, it's really a good fit for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the tough situation.
So I think, so they voted, they voted, they rescinded the recommendation on Shore Road and then they recommended one seventy-one and then also recommended one sixty-nine, one sixty-nine if needed.
Correct, as a separate.
So it's not like, you don't have, we don't, they're not going to just do one. They're going to do one and if it's not working, they're going to immediately add on one sixty-nine.
Right.
So Marlene, what is it you would like us to do for action in terms of this? Do you want us to authorize you to begin the, the work for conceptual drawings? And, or do you want to start negotiating? What do you want to do?
So the action, the next action that the board needs to take is to authorize me and Town Council to contact the respondent or, and/or respondents for one or both of the properties at Clay Pond Road to begin negotiations.
Contingent upon it being feasible.
Yes, we'll do a test fit.
Are you going to start discussions first or are you going to do all the others, this other stuff first?
I'm talking to the architect tomorrow, so I don't think I'll talk to the property owner before that.
So you want a motion, motion to authorize, the select board to authorize the town administrator to move forward with discussions of...
To contact.
With a test fit and then discussions.
No, the motion I need is to authorize me and Town Council to begin negotiations.
What I was trying to do.
Yeah, okay, awesome.
So a motion to authorize the town administrator and Town Council to start negotiations for recommended properties at one sixty-nine Clay Pond Road if needed and one seventy-one Clay Pond Road.
Motion by Peter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anne Marie. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yeah.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Unanimous. Progress, hopefully. A lot of it I think to do has to do with the shape of the lot. Stuff and what they can, they kind of made it work in Pecassett, so, you know, hopefully they can do some sort of thing to make it work. Or we start looking at adjacent properties. All right.
Let me do, Zion has three bays?
It's a four bay.
Four bay.
Four bay, yeah, that's...
There were two schematics that they presented, two-story and...
Yes.
They're definitely going to have to do two-story.
Yes, that's what...
For this, for this.
I will say that we had, because of the discomfort with taking land out of Article ninety-seven, we had worked to really limit our footprint as much as possible. And we were, you know, we were to the point where we would, we would not, we would not need more than an acre and a half. So we can, we can ask them to go back and, you know, work some more and see what they can do with this property. But it, we, you really don't need a huge, you don't need a huge amount of land. So we were very comfortable with an acre and a half. So I'm not saying that it's, you know, not going to be challenging and the architect isn't going to need to be creative, but it's also not out of the realm of possibility.
Yeah.
We waited, it's been this long. I mean, I know we got to be creative in order to make this successful, but it's also not fair for our public safety employees over to be in the conditions that they're in. So and for the people that live on that side, the bridge, that need proper fire and EMS protection. So I guess hopefully that, we've waited this long, with this hope that through our our paid staff and our consultants that we'll find something that will work, you know, because it's a long overdue.
We've been working on it consistently.
And it's not just since twenty eighteen.
For a number of years, I mean.
I mean, in various iterations, going back thirty, forty, fifty years, if you're talking on different committees over time, so it's... I don't know, and it gets me nervous with the discussion of the Bourne Bridge possibly, you know, being replaced, you know, finally. And we get to fund for the Sagamow Bridge. But once we saw even entertaining work over by the Bourne Bridge, we're going to need something in place, you know, and long before that. So it's, you know, it's, you know, we have a lot, we have a lot of things and a lot of ducks in a row and we just got to make sure that wherever the station ends up being, that is the right location and it's the right building, the service, the needs of the people on the south side of Canal and for the fire station, the fire department staff and as a whole. You know, we've been here this long, so.
Yeah, well, I think it's been five years since we appropriated the county land money with, with an eye to, and we had spent a lot of time planning for how we were going to put a station there. And so, you know, it's been seven, eight years in planning, so when we get a site, we'll have a, hopefully a good one. Okay. We voted that, right? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Next agenda topics are the retreat. There's a draft agenda in your packet, which is primarily focused on goals and priorities and expected and desired outcomes. And sort of a, what's going well, what could be adjusted, roles and responsibilities, norms and dynamics. One thing I do want to add, and I'm not sure, probably as part of the morning session, is just a brief review of our policies that we've worked on. We had, we had identified policies, and I want to say it was February of twenty-three, we made a list of policies and we added a few to it. And I just want to go over like where we are because we have pretty much done all of those and so we need to start thinking about where we want to go. But I also think that when we talk about goals and priorities, policy around marijuana, policy around comprehensive wastewater management plan, we have some big things that we're going to be doing that are really some policy decisions. And so that may be our policy focus, you know, just because we have some heavy lifting to do. So anyway, just like...
But we probably should have a new spreadsheet of...
Yeah, yeah, I just want to just kind of review because I think it's really, I think we should just recognize the fact that we, we set out to do some policies and we did a bunch of policies. And so I think it's good to do that, so. Sort of in that item two discussion. Does anybody else have anything they want to add for the, for the retreaters? Is this broad enough and close enough, broad enough and narrow enough?
I think one of the things, the big things that I had wanted was to have that time to reflect, you know, what's going well.
Yeah.
Yeah, what can we do better? What needs adjusting? And goals and priorities, that's huge. And, and sort of a roadmap too, like you said. Once we set those goals and priorities, what does that roadmap look like? And how does that drive our, our meetings and agendas?
Yep.
Some action plans.
Right.
Anything else? Melissa, any comment?
Um, I don't know, not necessarily. I mean, let's see, don't save it for the next week.
Okay. All right. Next town administrator's report.
Thank you. First, I'd like to let the select board know that Barnstable County IT has been very responsive during the migration to Office three sixty-five and has been working very hard to resolve everyone's problems. We are not quite finished with migrating all the departments, but the end is in sight. We've also welcomed a number of new employees to town during the, this period. And Barnstable County IT has also been able to equip them with all of their tech needs so they can hit the ground running. BCIT has been very good to work with. Town Council continues to work with the county's council on the purchase and sale agreement for the Pecassett property. I want to let you know that the county is in the process of assigning the lease for the senior housing to a new entity. The county intends to have that, to have that lease transfer finalized before closing on the property with the town. Town Council will keep us updated as this process moves along. And if we need to talk about any delays or anything, we'll, we'll bring that before you. Tim Lydon and I have received formal notice from the Pecassett Woods neighborhood that they will not be pursuing a town meeting article for May of twenty twenty-five to take any roads as public ways. We will continue to work with them to get ready for the twenty twenty-six town meeting. Just for your awareness, we have posted a notice of a unique property acquisition to facilitate, to facilitate the ISWIM expansion in the central register. This is a procedural requirement that is necessary before the town can enter into any binding agreements. Dan Barrett and Phil Goddard have been working closely with Town Council to keep this acquisition of eleven acres of mitigation land on track. Tim Lydon and DNR have been awarded three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant funding for dredging for the Red Brook Harbor South Channel and Chatham's Narrows. And at the end of June, or I should say by the end of June, ISWIM has diverted seven point five two tons of food waste from the landfill so far in twenty twenty-four. Wow. Thank you.
Minutes.
Motion approved minutes of six eleven twenty twenty-four.
Are we doing both, all of them?
I'll just answer them one at a time, just in case.
Okay.
Uh, okay.
Second.
Motion by Peter, second by Anne Marie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yeah.
MJ, yes, five zero zero.
Motion to approve the minutes of six twelve twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Jean.
Abstain.
Peter.
Yes.
Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yeah.
MJ, yes, four, zero, one.
And motion to approve minutes of seven two twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Jean.
Yes.
Peter.
Yes.
Anne Marie.
Yes.
Melissa.
Yeah.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. Okay. Committee reports.
As part of the, representative, Anne Marie and I, as are representing the board to the Canal Bridge area project, we both were today at the, the event hosted by Governor Healy and with the United States Senators Warren and Mackey and Congressman Keaton about the almost one billion dollars in funding, you know, to, for, to be used towards the replacement of these Sagamow Bridge. It was, and it was full of energy and it was, it was informative. But it's nice that we just have this momentum and it keeps on moving along, so. Thank, you know, thank you for state and the federal delegation that has been participating in this process. Because it's not only a local project to us, but it's a regional project as well, Capewide, so has huge implications.
It was really impressive to hear that this was the biggest federal single bridge award and it was the biggest federal award to Massachusetts, the one billion dollars. So that is really impressive to, that...
It was the, it's the largest infrastructure project in his, in the United States.
Right.
It's tremendous.
Yeah, the largest.
Yeah, so they did really great work getting that done.
It's, I think, because, I mean, if you talk about the big dig in Boston, you know, and that, I know that, that's a whole different situation, but yeah. Support our state and federal delegation as we move, as they move forward. John York, can you answer?
John?
Um, yes, so, yes, it is great to see that the bridge project is getting closer to reality. I attended the Bourne Recreation Authority meeting on Monday morning when MASTOT came and presented some fairly detailed description of what the construction will actually entail and the disruption to Bourne Scenic Park that will result from that. The Recreation Authority and MASTOT had excellent discussions back and forth that I think were really practical about the issues that raises. And I think it's appropriate, as we celebrate receiving funding, to start to think about what the project itself is actually going to be and what the town's interests are and how to, how the town can represent those interests. I recommend to any of you, unfortunately, it wasn't recorded, but I wish, I wish you could watch that meeting. So the discussion went back and forth between how much of the scenic park will be out of service for how many years? Five, six years? And Greg Foligno actually suggesting it might be necessary for them to shut the entire park for all five of those years because if they have park customers who come and discover that there's pile driving going on and there's kids around and even though that supposedly that portion of the park is closed to a safe perimeter, when parents normally come to the park, they don't expect to have their eyes on their kids the entire time. And the nightmare of refund requests is probably much bigger than the nightmare of selecting how, you know, to close whatever, you get the picture. There was a lot of discussion. It was, it was very productive discussion from my point of view because neither side said that we have the answer. They said, we need to work on this. But that's not the only place in this town that those sorts of issues are going to come up. Another thing that came up at that meeting is Mass DOT declared that they're going to be closing the bike path on the canal, which is basically the same situation as Scenic Park, it's going right under the bridge they're going to be constructing. That makes good sense to close it, but they also announced they will not be posting or creating any sort of a detour. And they, they posted that as a done decision that's already decided. I don't think that's appropriate. I'm not even sure they can qualify for federal funding if they don't, but they seem to think they can. But that's something the town might want to push back on or just explore the possibilities. And, you know, if they declare it's totally impossible to create a detour, that's one thing, but who's going to check on whether or not it is possible? That's just one more thing, but there's going to be a lot of things like that that come up. When we actually start to talk about the reality of five billion dollars of construction happening in our town. So I just would want to put the town on alert as I have in the past, and I think our town needs to really organize their thoughts on what the town's needs and desires are and present them coherently to Mass DOT. Thank you.
I just think that as part of any future agenda, I'd like to see an agenda item.
Go back to the bridges?
Yeah.
Yeah, or maybe do it once a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because this, this has huge effects, you know, and we should be having discussions throughout.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The Bourne Community Engagement Committee awarded their first grant of the season, of the year to the Valley Farm Community Gardens. They're doing a Monarch Day in August, and it's actually the first of its kind on Cape Cod.
Nice.
So they have some great, great events planned for that day. They moved it to Abtuxas. Originally, they were going to try to do it, but there were limitations to have it on the site where they have, they actually have the farm garden, so they moved it to Abtuxas, so it's going to play, take place in August, August twenty-fourth. And, yeah, it's going to be a great event. They're expecting a few hundred people.
Wow.
Interest, they've, have had, you know, donations for the event and should be a good day.
Sounds good.
So.
Anything else? No, we got the South Side Fire Station, I can't, no, we're not meeting with you ahead. Okay, correspondence?
Correspondence, for, Select Board's correspondence for July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. A, DEP letter, ESP for CS dash nineteen, FS dash thirteen at all. B, twenty-two Sagamore Road, Board of Health variance request. C, gas line maintenance information north of Belmont Circle. D, gas line maintenance information on Bourndale Road. E, Xfinity channel changes. F, JBCC Joint Base Cape Cod Public Meeting Calendar, July two thousand twenty-four. G, Charlie Noes resignation, Police Facility Building Committee. H, Henkove Boat Replacement Request, a butter's notice. Boat ramp replacement request. And I, R, Enos Talent Bank COA Council and Agent.
Thank you. Can you?
All the acronyms. DP hyphen SCR.
Could you write a letter to Charlie Noes on behalf of the board for his being chair of the Police Facility Building Committee, thanking him for his service? Okay, um, future agenda items related to correspondence or any other items for future discussion?
Actually, just a comment before we move on to the correspondence.
We are, we did correspondence.
I know, but one of the, one of the answers that we had from the information regarding the gas and pipeline and the activity is, they're doing it as well on Joint Base, right?
It seems like they said it was subpar, well, we, we, yeah. Well, well.
Okay.
It's not a correspondence, so. We have Melissa, next meeting dates, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call vote. Jean?
Yes.
Peter?
Yep.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
MJ, yes, five zero zero. We are adjourned at eight fifty-five.